Good evening and welcome. We will go ahead and start this meeting. As we've given updates the last going on three years now, just giving a brief update here tonight. We are conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting both in person and virtually using the Zoom webinar platform. We're glad everybody has joined us here tonight, both in person and virtually. Participants who are attending tonight's meeting may provide public comment during the public participation and public hearings portions of the agenda tonight. During these portions of the agenda, community members joining us via Zoom, please raise your hand virtually and our staff will unmute your microphone, announce your name, and you'll be able to make your comments. We will start with members of the public who are here in person in council chambers and then those joining us remotely. We have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. We do ask the participants keep their comments to under three minutes. Thank you again for joining us. We will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silence. And with that, I mean, we start with roll call, Mr. Manager.
Ms. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Carmenito.
President.
Ms. Dugan.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb.
Present.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Chief is here, manager's here, assistant manager's here, solicitor's here. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. With that, under item A for presentations tonight, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I have the pleasure of making two motions. The first, I'll motion to adopt a resolution to change the classifications within the police department.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Like to describe the motion?
Do you want to give any description just for point order? So through discussion in police and personnel with the mayor and with our new chief of police, we have made a decision and put the motion forth for a vote to change the structure a little bit, and we will be moving forward with two lieutenants within our police force.
Thank you. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Ms. Berkeley.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to appoint Sergeant Brian McIntyre and Sergeant Joseph Nimmick to the newly created positions of lieutenant.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley.
Second.
Second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Mayor, would you like to proceed with section or part B?
I got too excited and was ready to go up to the microphone. Thank you so much, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you, everyone who is attending here with us in person and those attending virtually. We are very excited for this opportunity to promote two incredible sergeants this evening to the rank of lieutenant. I would ask that our chief, Brian Marshall, what will happen is he's actually going to read the biography of each of the sergeants. We'll go in alphabetical order. And then I will meet the first sergeant and then the second one up at the podium and we will do the swearing in ceremony. Thank you very much.
Now, alphabetical order, Sergeant Brian McIntyre, please come forward. Sergeant McIntyre started with the Phoenixville Police Department in 2007 as a patrolman on the second platoon. Prior to that, he was an officer for several years with another local enforcement agency in Chester County. McIntyre excelled as a patrolman and was the first departmentally certified vehicle crash reconstructionist. In addition, he served as a member of the Chester County Drug Force, Drug Task Force. In 2010, he was promoted to the rank of corporal for the first platoon. During his time as corporal, he sought out and was assigned as a field training officer and successfully trained eight of our new hired officers over the years. In 2007, McIntyre was promoted to the rank of sergeant, became a supervisor of the third platoon. In 2019, he accepted a new role, supervisor of narcotics unit, and led the investigator liaison with the Chester County Drug Task Force through the district attorney's office. McIntyre continues to train in every aspect of his job, including law enforcement, executive development classes, referred to as LEEDA. He's also currently enrolled in the Northwestern University School of Staff and Command, and he begins in a few weeks. Present or present tonight to witness this next chapter of his career in Phoenixville is always encourage wife Kelly and also that's trooper McIntyre to Brian. Congratulations on your new leadership position.
Raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Brian McIntyre.
Brian McIntyre.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
I will.
I will.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Discharge the duties of the office as lieutenant.
Discharge the duties of office as lieutenant.
With the borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
With the borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
Chester County, Pennsylvania.
Chester County, Pennsylvania.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration of a person's.
Without consideration of a person's.
Race.
Race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Lieutenant McIntyre.
I would now ask that Sergeant Joseph Nimmick step up forward, please. Sergeant Nimmick began his career with the Phoenixville Police Department in 1991. He's pretty old. He was 19 years of age. However, he recently completed his 30-year service with the Phoenixville Police Department. He was promoted to the rank of corporal in 1997 and promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2001. During that time, Sergeant Nimmick was appointed to the Chester County Municipal Drug Task Force as a narcotics investigator. Sergeant Nimmick was a patrol sergeant for eight years and was then transferred to the detective division in 2009. Sergeant Nimmick supervised detective division for eight years and was assigned to his current role as administrative sergeant on the command staff in 2017. Sergeant Nimmick has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from St. Joe's University, and he's currently enrolled in the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. It'll be done in a few weeks. He is midway through, and his graduation date is actually June 9th. When he completes the academy, he successfully obtained 15 credits from the University of Virginia towards a master's degree in public safety. Sergeant Nimmick is joined here tonight by his wife Rebecca, his children Jack, Kate, and also his mother Diane. Mayor.
Aye.
Aye.
Joseph Nimmick.
Joseph Nimmick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
I will.
I will.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office as lieutenant.
Of the office as lieutenant.
With the borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
With the borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
Chester County.
Chester County.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
Of a person's race.
Of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Lieutenant Nimmick.
They would take an hour.
We'll give the police department a few minutes to make an exit so they can take photos and move on with the evening themselves. Chief, thank you. With that, we will move on to item four, public participation, as was described at the opening of tonight's meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. We have one more item under presentations. Under item C, we have a presentation tonight from the Phoenixville Mountain Bike Group. I believe we have a PowerPoint that can be brought up. And Chad, if you'd like to kick us off here.
Okay.
It was just a moment to bring up your presentation.
Thank you.
No.
There we go. Good evening. I'm Chad Syndico. I live on Bateman Drive in the borough. Here tonight, representing not only the youth mountain bike team in the area, but More Kids on Bike, which is our nonprofit that is associated with our team. Tonight, I wanted to give you some updates on the current Phoenixville Bike Project. Talk about the existing space that is there, present some ideas for an updated project proposal and give you some insight into the timeline of the project. So just to remind you, if you have the next slide, one more, please. There we go. Our vision for the Phoenixville Bike Park is a series of purpose-built trails that will provide features, a safe environment for riders of all ages, all abilities. As I shared in our last presentation, we believe that cycling or riding a bike promotes physical, emotional, social well-being. It's a lifelong activity that we can do from early adolescence through adulthood. So this Phoenixville Bike Park will be an awesome outdoor green space, and as we shared before, we believe it is a true asset for the Phoenixville and surrounding communities. We can have the next slide. There we go. So this is an update on our fundraising to date. Our initial project cost was $61,415. We currently sit at $72,000. It's probably actually a little bit more since we made this presentation last week, which is 117% of the cost. So we're ahead of where we thought we would be. The enthusiasm has been amazing. The events that we have kind of coordinated and participated in include the things you see listed there. Some formal fundraising events, but private corporate community donations. We've had some sponsorship opportunities that have done well for us. We've had corporate giving through employee and employer matching. We've applied for several grants, actually received one, and engaged with the community in a number of ways. On the next slide, you'll see some of the flyers. You may have seen these around town. These basically highlight the three formal fundraisers that we've organized and had one to date. One is ongoing and one is upcoming. If we could go to the next slide. There we go. So our first event was on April 10th. Root Down Brewing Company was gracious enough to host us. It was a ticketed event. We were overwhelmed with the response. We had well over 300 attendees. We sold the tickets. We had raffle baskets, played games with the kids, and offered food and beverages as part of the fundraising initiative, did very well for that. Currently, we have a virtual event going on where people have registered for riding between May 1st and the 21st and logging the miles in a kind of virtual competition of sorts. We have 89 participants currently engaged in that, and we have another fundraiser coming up at the Root Down Beer Garden outside on May the 21st. You are all invited, and you can see some of the things listed there that we will be doing on that day. We also were gracious enough to receive a bike donated by Twisted Cog that we're raffling off. We've been selling what we call the golden tickets for that. We have well over 200 tickets sold for that, and we'll be drawing for a winner on that on May the 21st. Again, through these events, we've raised $72,000. We could go to the next slide. This is a satellite shot that we pulled from Chesko, Chesko Net, I believe is the name of it, of the existing fenced-in areas at Reservoir Park. Our initial proposal for the bike area was to utilize the area you see labeled at the top, and the square footage of that area is 26,000 square feet. In between that area and the larger area at the bottom, we have this current small dog park area and the large dog park area, and we can see the square footages for those areas labeled as well. Next slide, please. This was our initial proposal. We highlighted the general area of the trails that we planned out, actually that the builder planned out. And you see that we have three different colored trails, which would be our beginner, our intermediate, and our experienced trails. Utilizing this space, you're looking at somewhat linear arrangement of the trails. It's narrow. It's back and forth. There is an elevation change from the top of, well, from the fence bordering the small dog park area to the bottom to the northern part, a drop of about 10 feet. And that kind of runs parallel to the long end of the fence and kind of slopes down in a way. So if we could go to the next slide, with our updated proposal, with the enthusiasm that we've experienced associated with this project to date, we began to dream a little bit bigger and started to look at the space in the current fenced-in areas. With our updated proposal, what we would like to do is basically swap the area that is on the bottom, where you see the color-coded trails now, with the area that is on the top. So the large dog park would effectively become the area that is 26,000 square feet, and the bike park would be able to utilize the 52,000 square feet. We still would have three trails as the previous plan would, and we believe that this presents a number of advantages. Number one, it maximizes currently underused park space, which I'll show you in just a moment. The sloping of this area is a change of 30 feet of elevation change from where you see the pink trails down to the yellow trails on the bottom corner. It drops from like, kind of like that top corner to the bottom 30 feet, and we pulled that from the contour lines in the Chesko parcel viewer. With this space, we would have more flow-type trails where you can see it's not quite so literal, linear, sorry. And the part that we're really excited about, in addition to having some elevation change, which is good for a bike park, is the expanded trail of the beginner area that you see up at the top, and that is color-coded as pink. That beginner trail, we feel would really maximize the accessibility by all users, people who are new to cycling, new to mountain biking. They would have more of a a contained trail experience where they could really develop their scales and then expand outward onto the trails that surround the bike park in the area. So if we could go to the next slide, one of the advantages that we really are bringing to your attention is the area in that current 52,000 square feet. Presently, these are pictures I took last week of the bottom corner where it slopes down, that change in elevation of 30 feet on the left there. In the center there, that is the back fence that kind of borders the disc off course in the back and slopes down to that corner. And then the image on the right is the top corner that meets the 26,000 square foot kind of in the back corner of the park. That's the current status of those spaces. Those are the pictures that I tried to take to capture what the current status or environment looks like. We could go to the next slide. So if we take those areas, and I've kind of shaded those in, you will see that I measured the square footage again using the Chesko Net Viewer. That basically reduces that space from 52,000 down to about 27,000 square feet that's actually being used in there now. We could go to the next slide. So again, these areas, just another shot of those, has reduced that 52,000 square feet effectively down to 27,000 square feet that is currently being used. And then on the next slide. So we're looking to take that space, if we can use this 52,000 square feet to take that underused area, clean it up, and make it an asset to what the bike park would be, having the expanded area to make it more flow, and having that slope from the top to the bottom, which is good for a bike park, would promote, again, a less linear trail design, more flow, expanded area for the beginner trail, which we're excited about for programming purposes. And really, we feel would make this the optimal bike park. If we were going to do this, this would be the way we would do it and not have to expand it in the future. On the next slide, please. This would continue the current fenced-in areas. There's no change to that, effectively swapping the large dog park with the bike park. Small dog park would stay in place right in the middle there. There is currently the fencing that you need for a dog park to enter, to exit, the little kind of airlock, if you will, to unleash the dog and let it into the park. That is in all three of these areas. The change in the space would still have a large area for the large dog park. One of the more popular dog parks in the area, my understanding, is the Long Ford Park Reynolds Dog Park down in Port Providence, which has an area you can see listed there of 29,300 square feet for their big, large dog park and 9,750 square feet for their small dog park. So maintaining that top and middle area for the current dog parks at Reservoir or the future dog park at Reservoir, sorry, there's a lot of dog parks here, would be consistent with what is available in the area. So on the next slide, this new proposal, we talked to the builder, if we had 52,000 square feet of space to build this park, obviously, it's bigger. It would cost more. So you can see the updated cost there of $93,000, and we are extremely confident that we can meet that goal. We can raise 100% of the cost for the design and construction of this bike park. We're confident that we can do it, and we're confident that we can do it and be on schedule for a July build. In preparation for a July build, More Kids on Bikes, our nonprofit, is more than willing to clean up the area needed for the big dog park relocation, the effective swap of the areas, cleaning up the 26,000 square foot space of sticks, debris, any down trees that are inside the fenced-in area. We feel like we would be able to move those out. Clear the area of the existing gate areas. They're clear now, but there's some work to be done to clean it up a little bit. For the new area, the big bike park, that lower corner, that southwest corner that slopes down, needs some definite work to get cleaned up. We are, we have a network of volunteers that have reached out to us already in anticipation for the previous plan and are willing to get involved and help us clean that area up. We would be able to sort the down trees and the limbs for removal or chipping. We would clear the vegetation from the fencing. You saw in some of the pictures that I shared, the fencing has vegetation. You can't even see the fence in some places. So we'd be more willing to clean that up and get it ready for the build. And on our last slide. The energy and enthusiasm for this project from this, this community and surrounding communities has been infectious. That word infectious is one that we've heard a lot over the last couple of years, but this has been infectious in a good way. And we are really excited. We believe that this plan, this updated plan, would take this to the next level. We have the opportunity to make an extraordinary space that would be a graded addition to the growing outdoor and recreational environment that Phoenixville has created and cultured really in these last couple of years. So we are super excited to bring this to your attention and for your consideration.
Thank you, Chad. So we have the opportunity right now for any questions for the presentation, or if council's willing, we can vote to add this to the agenda tonight under new business, where we can also ask questions. So what is council's pleasure for this proposal?
I have a question.
Okay.
How much maintenance would be involved once built, and is there a plan for that on how you would take care of it?
Sure. So there would be, in terms of maintenance, it would be, there'll be trails in there. And so our organization, that's something we do. We do trail work, and we would be more than willing to utilize that network of volunteers to maintain the trails. There may, there may be some grass that needs cutting. We're not sure. We'll have to see how that kind of plays out, what the vegetation looks like in there. So there may be, there may be some mowing that needs to be done. But in terms of the trails, the maintenance of the trails, the pickup of debris and sticks and twigs and leaves throughout the season, that's something that our organization handled 100%. The purpose-built features that would be in there are built to be, you know, obviously very strong, weather-resistant, and things of that nature. There may be some maintenance that is needed on those, and I don't think there would be in the first couple of years, but, you know, with weather and time, those things may need to be addressed. We are more than willing, as our organization, More Kids on Bikes, to put together a proposal with the, you know, to present to you guys the borough of what we can provide to help to assist with that and include it as part of our annual fundraising. I believe the term is an MOU. So we would definitely, we're actually working on that now and look forward to bringing that to your attention, to come to some sort of agreement as to what we can provide. But we're dedicated, we're engaged, we're not going anywhere. We picked up 18 new riders for this season alone for our NICA Pennsylvania team, and that's just a testament to the enthusiasm that there is in this community for cycling and for this park.
I have a question as well. Based on the updated plan, do you have any kind of estimate as to like annual usage or ridership that you would get coming through the park?
That's a tough one. I mean, in terms of, are you thinking like in terms of numbers of riders?
Yeah.
I don't. We would be guessing. I mean, it'd be similar to the disc off. I was, I was watching their presentation of their annual update and was amazed at the numbers that came through there. I've been up there on several occasions myself with my family to utilize the course, and it's been amazing, the enthusiasm and the use of that. I, I would be guessing. I mean, if we do this and we do it right, I assume it would be popular.
I think so too. I was just curious. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I don't have like a number for you.
But just to piggyback off that, I know that you're, the interest has grown year over year. So when you started year to year, you've had more riders every year, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, we started 1920, year 2019, 2020, during the pandemic. We kept it small for that reason. We had 10 to 12 riders. The next year, that doubled. This year, we've added another 18. I'm an educator. I teach in Gray Valley, and I started a team there in 2016. I'm I'm an educator. I teach in Gray Valley and I started a team there in twenty sixteen, and it was very similar in that the numbers were small. And then as the community found out about it, they grew and grew and grew. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's 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 quite popular.
So you are, you're basically looking for a council approval on this enlarged plan tonight with the caveats of of you're able to make the, you you believe you can do the fundraising and that you want to be able to then proceed with the initial steps in July.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
I I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, to move the full discussion and further questions about the of about this proposal to the new the new business part of the agenda. And then we can have a resolution and we could, at that point, make a decision.
Very good.
Second.
Motion. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. So this item will now be added to section nine, new business item B for the mountain bike proposal of a reservoir park.
And and you you guys can stay because probably we'll have more questions, right?
Great. Give you a break here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will now move on to the first round of public participation. Folks who joined us at the beginning of the meeting heard our monthly spiel. If you're here tonight in the audience, please come forward and we'll have you state your name and sign the logbook. Members who are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand digitally. Members of our staff will then call on you one by one and announce your name and then unmute you and allow you to make your comments. We will start with those members of the public who are here with us in person. And with that.
Good evening. Lots of exciting stuff going on tonight. Two new lieutenants of bike trail for for young kids. It sounds like great stuff going on. So I am here as a member of the Phoenixville Business Alliance. And on May second, we emailed a letter to everyone on council, Phoenixville First, Parks and Rec, the mayor and the borough manager. I hope everyone received it. If not, I can certainly read the bullet points, but I assume you have them. As the closures are rapidly approaching us, the the Bridge Street closures are rapidly approaching. We want to offer our assistance in the process moving forward. We all have a business in the downtown area and we're all affected. We're looking forward to working together to make this a positive experience for everyone. Please respond to the email address at the top of the letter you received to to completely have open dialogue with the members of PBA. Thank you for your attention to this and for listening. Have a good evening. I'm Susan Meadows, Main Street in Phoenixville.
Thanks, Sue. Anyone else here in person tonight for public participation? If not, we'll move on to, oh, hello. Yes, well, I I plan, yeah. Yep.
There will be a public hearing on the comprehensive plan. And during the hearing, public participation will be a part of the hearing.
Do we know when that is?
The hearing is scheduled for tonight. Is it, is it early on the agenda? It's early in the agenda.
Probably the next fifteen minutes, I'd say.
Okay.
Oh, so should I wait?
Your call.
It it's up to you, but if you would like your comments to be part of the hearing on the comp plan, you should probably wait until the hearing.
Okay, with that, we'll we will go to the those joining us virtually. And we'll have staff identify and select folks who have raised their hands digitally on the Zoom platform.
Jane, have turned on your microphone.
Oh, thank you, but I'll wait until the hearing on the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Yvette, have turned on your microphone.
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm Yvette Blanding. I'll be representing Orion Communities. And I'm here for approval of a community celebration this summer, Sunday, July seventeenth, celebrating our forty fifth anniversary as well as other nonprofit organizations in the area that are also celebrating milestones and anniversaries as well.
Thank you, Yvette.
Thank you.
David, I've turned on your microphone. David, are you there? I turned on your microphone.
Okay, now you can hear me.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. David Lutzker here, two forty-three Morgan Street and president of Phoenixville Area Green Team. I wanted to update the council on latest initiative. There is certainly an overlap with some of the topics in the comp plan, but some is not related to the comp plan. We have combined forces with Phoenixville Area Transition and other local advocates for open space. To begin an initiative, we're calling SOS Save Open Space. And in particular, we are looking to stop the sale of the kindergarten center by the school district. We have ongoing petition and looking to petition the Chester County Court of Common please to reject the school district's petition for the sales approval. We feel that taxpayers have already paid for this land, and this is our open space that we want to preserve. So that is a plan that's moving forward. We have joined and called ourselves a Phoenixville Area Friends of Open Space. And you'll hear more about some of what we're looking for with regards to the comp plan. But I did want to bring, let everyone know that this is a a new local campaign to preserve open space that we have and specifically around the kindergarten center. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else on the Zoom end, nobody else in the room. So with that, we'll close our first round of public participation. Under item five tonight, we have our consent agenda. Council has been able to review all these items. Is there any items council wishes to discuss further? Okay. Seeing none, what is council's pleasure for our consent agenda tonight?
Mr. President, I make a motion that council approve the consent agenda as stated on the agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Carmenito. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. From there, we'll move on to item six. We have our communications and council participation. Any members of council wishing to make any updates or observations from last month? I will just say, we did have a fantastic ribbon cutting and open house at our brand new rec center. One point of order that I'd like to point out that was brought to my attention today after discussing with our recreation director is this is the only municipally owned and operated recreation center in Chester County. And I think that's something that we should be particularly proud of, something that I know this council has fought for. And previous councils have certainly worked very hard to get us to this point. So I do want to acknowledge that we have created a community resource that that is really unparalleled in Chester County. So any other updates from council or otherwise? With that, we'll move on to the mayor's report, Mr. Ursula.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you all so much for being here with us today. I want to just call out a couple of things. We'd like to especially thank our congressperson, Chrissy Houlihan, who held the State of the Sixth here within the Borough of Phoenixville at the Colonial Theater. Another great organization this last month that had a wonderful event was a One Hundred Women of Phoenixville. It's a, the name is a little deceptive. They actually had close to two hundred attend at that incredible event. So check that out. If you haven't already, it's an incredible organization. They meet, I believe, twice a year, and they actually helped to contribute in the last six years, close to ninety thousand dollars to nonprofits within the Borough of Phoenixville. Again, it's called One Hundred Women of Phoenixville. A very special shout out to Restore. Restore is part of Habitat for Humanity. It opened in the old True Value, a space next to the Acme, in the Acme Shopping Center, an incredible spot. If you haven't had a chance already, they are now open. And if you have any gently used larger furniture, it's a great place for you to bring it. So check that out. Arbor Day, I I know as we have the bike park here with us today, I just wanted to call out a couple of things. We had an incredible Arbor Day celebration. We had a number of people who turned out and also planted trees throughout the Borough of Phoenixville. But while we were up there, one of the great things I noticed was the incredible amount of people who were there utilizing the disc golf course. So it was wonderful to see so many people out early on a Saturday morning enjoying disc golf. So I can only imagine when the park hopefully will be approved and go forward, it will have a number of people who will be attending. In addition to that, I did have the opportunity to attend the More Kids on Bikes fundraiser, and it was exciting to see how many people were not only there from the Phoenixville community, but people traveling to really support this initiative. So I think this will actually be, put us kind of on the map in a different way from a recreational perspective. So it's very exciting. Crescendo, of course, had their final concert. Crescendo is a free program which helps students access strings-based instruments. Any student in Barclay Elementary is able to do that. It's an incredible nonprofit organization we have within the Borough of Phoenixville and very excited to say that they were the recipient of the One Hundred Women of Phoenixville's last grant cycle. And so they helped them to receive a significant amount of money, which actually will help them to hire new teachers to continue with this program. Also, a very special shout out to Lizzie Strunk, who hosted an incredible event called Collaborate, which was with a number of artists, and she hosted that event at one oh one Bridge Street in the basement of that building. And it was really neat to see a young person put together a beautiful art show for the community. Again, I just join and echo everyone with the new rec center. It's absolutely incredible. When you have an opportunity, I hope that you will go up there and see it. Please be cautious if our borough council president tries to get you to play a pickup game of basketball. I was basically just the water boy standing on the sideline, but it looked very dangerous. Just kidding. Another great organization we have, which has been picking up a lot of traction, is called Phoenixville Social. It's phoenixvillesocial.com. And what they are doing is social projects, service projects, as well as some intramural sports programs here within the Borough of Phoenixville. That's underneath the J C's. So speaking of the J C's, one of the things that we're looking forward, now this is all upcoming things, for the month of May, it's, we are back after a two-year hiatus, but the annual Dogwood Festival. So of course, celebrating since nineteen forty-three, the Phoenixville community and community service within the community. It runs from Wednesday, May eighteenth, until Saturday, the twenty first. And on Saturday, the twenty first, we will have our annual Dogwood Parade, which has been taking to the streets. Well, with the exception for COVID, had been seventy nine year, would have been seventy nine years this year. So we're very excited to have that. And that will be starting up near our rec center, coming down what eventually turns into Gay Street, turning on to the two hundred block of Bridge Street, turning on to Main Street and then ending a little bit after the park on Fifth Avenue. So check out the Dogwood Festival and Parade. The festival runs from six to ten every night. And then on Saturday, it runs from noon to ten, and the parade is at one PM on Saturday, the twenty first, which is also Armed Services Day. And so we will pay tribute to members of our armed services on that day. May twenty second is the Pancake Breakfast at the Phoenixville Area Senior Center. Check out all the incredible programming they have. The twenty seventh of May brings the Kiwanis Patriotic Day Celebration, which has been taking place in Reese Park for a number of years. And also, we would wish everyone a very happy and safe Memorial Day. And then Project Focus and our senior prom coming up. So thank you to all those who are participating in that and helping to create Project Focus, which is a special event after prom that helps to keep high school students safe. And then finally, we move into June, as just as quickly as all of our events went away in Phoenixville, they have come back even faster. So moving into June, we will be celebrating Pride Month. And so a number of events coming up. Phoenixville, of course, is very proud to be home to the LGBTQ plus Equality Alliance of Chester County and also home to Chester County's Pride Festival. So make sure that you're checking out all the events that are associated with that. So other than that, we wish everybody also very happy promotions and graduation ceremonies, and we will see you again soon.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
I just want to add, remind everybody, next Tuesday is the primary election day in Pennsylvania. Make sure to vote.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item thirteen. We have appointments, council resolutions. At this time, we actually have a full slate of volunteers who serve on our various boards and committees. There are some upcoming openings. So if if anybody is interested in taking part in any of the upcoming openings, we do ask that you reach out to either your councilperson or staff, and we can point you in the right direction as to how to, you know, what each committee does and how to join them. With that, we'll move on to item nine of tonight's agenda under new business. We have a motion to approve the termination of a right-of-way for an abandoned water line at Steel Point. This is quite an abandoned line.
I can give a little bit. So as a part of the Steel Point Phase Six development, a number of existing unused easements were extinguished because new utilities are being put in place and we, as the borough, are being provided with new easements. As a part of the current owner, TH Properties, selling the development to a developer, Lennar, which has been their process for a number of the phases. The title report showed that there was one water line easement that remained across the property and goes diagonally across the whole property, right in the middle where a bunch of the units are proposed to be built. After speaking with borough staff and the borough engineer, it was confirmed that this water line easement is unused and abandoned and that it would be appropriate to grant the termination of this easement. So I negotiated this easement agreement or termination of the easement agreement with the council for Lennar and TH Properties and specifically made sure that there was a release of liability if there happened to be any abandoned structures under the ground, which is what I think is the important part from the borough's standpoint, and that is included in this termination agreement.
And what is council's pleasure for this termination right away?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the termination of right-of-way for an abandoned water line on Steel Point.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Is that sufficient for a motion? We don't need to put parcel numbers or anything else pertaining to this?
Correct. They're they're on the agreement.
Got it. Okay, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And with newly added item B under new business, we have the mountain bike proposal for Reservoir Park. The applicants are still here with us tonight. So now that we've got a few minutes to think about the proposal, any further questions from council for the proposal or from council for staff, et cetera? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions about the proposal. The the current where you currently have the the original plant, where you plan to put the new dog, the new large dog park. Is that currently fenced?
Yes.
That is fenced. Okay. I was just up there last night and I don't remember seeing that. Okay. That particular portion of land, and it's up to you or maybe it's up to Gene, that that is fairly more sloping downhill than where the current log, large dog park is. Would we, would we do any adjustment to that or would you, we just can, you know, continue to operate it the way it currently is?
We leave the land, the landline, they would do the cleanup of felled trees and and that, but we would not want to try to go in there and straighten out the the slope. In fact, it enhances the experience for the M T B, and it doesn't affect the dog station. They got four legs, so they're in four-wheel drive all the time.
Are you asking? Well, it's just that the, we're going to be moving the log, large dog park, which right now, a good portion of it is kind of gently sloping from the from the front fence
Yes.
backwards, but not, but not, not down toward the river, whereas the the new, where you're, where we're moving it to, it's a little bit more downslope. Not, not, not terribly. And then would you, would you also be moving the the curd furnishings? There's some, there's like, okay. And is there a double hatch gate on that? There is. Okay. So this is more for borough council, for for management. So we're putting in and mountain bike lines. What's the legal liability? What, 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 what risk factor do we run?
We, basically with things like that, the, the, it's orange. It's our insurance company. It's the same as if we were to have a, a skate park. There's a, uh, uh, a general. Placker that we put up that basically says you're at risk, uh, and there's language that we would get from our insurance company. Our general liability insurance company that we would post signs that specifically state that the borough, that you're doing this at your own risk and the borough's, uh, at fault. It's standard language, uh, from experiences from the, the skate parks to concrete skate parks.
Uh, council, does, does that stand up? I mean, I realize anybody can sue for anything.
It does. I, I mean, I would defer to what insurance council, uh, has represented. Uh, I, I think, uh, the one maybe additional factor would be, uh. Maybe annually, we want to inspect any structures or trails, um, more structures that are put in, um, to make sure. That they don't need any maintenance. And if we determine they would, then we would close the trail until they're fixed.
And, and is your organization in any way exposed or to, like, somebody has an accident and they want to sue somebody? Do you, do you know how that, how that generally works?
Well.
If you, uh, any questions have to actually be answered from the microphone. So if you.
We have a general liability policy.
Thank you. Uh, just so everybody can hear it, you know, virtually.
Correct. Yeah, we would have that in place during the, uh, build of the park as well. Up through the dedication of the park to the borough.
And, and they would be required to, uh, list us as additional insured upon, on that.
Okay. What approximately would you envision the timeframe of the large dog park being closed until you. Close the current one and open the new one? Just because, you know, I, if you're not aware, it, it had. Then it had fallen apart for a while and we took it over, I guess, more than a year ago. And, and got it cleaned up. They got it, got it back in, into working order and it's steadily used.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and I've been up there in recent times, uh, using the disc golf course and riding my bike. Uh, we would, we would make it our priority to make sure there was absolutely no point at which a dog park wasn't available for the large dogs.
Okay.
In other words, we would do all the cleanup in the proposed new space for them. And make sure that it was one hundred percent ready before we went and did anything to the other fifty-two thousand square foot. Spot. Yeah. That would be our priority.
And then the, the build out of the, of, of your park, of the, of the bike park, what's, what's your, I mean, you've talked about July cleanup. What's your anticipated? What do you, is it designed? I mean, it sounds like you have a new number and everything.
Yeah. So we had a design for the original space. And when we started thinking about this other space, we had the designer come back out. We had some questions for him anyway. Take a look at this bigger space and what would that look like? What would it cost to see if it was a number that we felt we would, we could even reach? And so we do have a design in place and, um, it would take probably a little bit longer, but not much longer than the previous space. Um, it's not so much that there would be, uh. Double the, we'll call it features, the little wooden features and things of that, that nature that they put in. There would be actually more space between the features. To let the park breathe a little bit and, uh, and flow more. That's, that's a mountain bike term. But, um. We, we think it would be three to four weeks from start to finish.
And then, um, Gene, um, there would be a memorandum of understanding about. What kind of responsibility they have for maintenance and, and repair and so forth. I mean, what, how much of this would, would fall to Parks and Rec in terms of maintaining this facility?
We would have a, a general, uh, uh, like a term sheet that lists. They're able to use this park. They're able to do these things, uh, the insurance requirements and reported requirements, inspection requirements. Uh, similar to what we have with, uh, 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 disc golf.
And this is open to everyone to use at any time, right? Obviously, if the club's up there, you're having a tournament or so, worth this being utilized, but.
Yeah, it would be a public park. And we feel that one of the advantages of the current infrastructure of that area is the fence. Um, not our, it's not our intention to have it locked every day, but. That option is there. Typically, the, the parks are open from dawn till dusk sort of thing while daylight is available. But you do have that option if you want to utilize that already existing infrastructure of the fencing and, and the gates that are there. And that's a nice thing to have if a feature should need some sort of maintenance, that we can make sure that it's secure and not being used. Uh, while that, those, those areas would be addressed.
That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a procedural, uh, question with regard to how the motion would be worded. This would be a, a motion to approve, or I guess to permit Phoenixville M T B. To create the, um, the, the bike. Park at the. At Reservoir Park. And, but we, I think we would also need to authorize borough staff to execute a memorandum of understanding. To that.
So we did the first part pertaining to the, the original agreement, but we, I think a new motion.
Right.
Right. But the motion would, would include, yeah.
That's correct. Uh, I, I would add that, uh. Probably also want to include borough staff and borough consultants, uh, review of the plan, uh, because I think we would want. Um, the borough engineer to make sure that any structures that are proposed to be placed, uh, i- in the mountain bike park. You know, are structurally acceptable.
Just another point of clarification. We did approve the original plan. So this would be approving the new proposal, correct?
Correct. This would be a, a sort of a internal land swap proposal. Um, you know, we, we blessed the project for the former small dog area. Um, just to keep everything infused. I do like the idea that, um, I know a lot of, uh, pump tracks and scale parks don't have the fencing, um, and it's, it's not because they didn't, don't want it. It's. An added cost. So I do think it's an added feature that we, we do have a fencing that, um. Seasonally, uh, if we have a monsoon season like we did this weekend, it can be locked and, and, uh, that way try to keep everything in. Better operating condition, um, for longer. So. Other questions from council on this proposal?
I, I kind of more had a, uh, a comment. I love the project. I'm excited to see it happen. I just, um. Anticipate how we co, uh, coexist with the Frisbee Golf. And, uh, if they both become. Really popular, you know, just that we were able to both successfully maximize the space. And, uh, coexist together. So I know it's not really a question, just kind of like.
Absolutely. Um, we look forward to that. We, um, you know, we were. Welcomed by the borough to use Reservoir Park before the disc golf course was an idea. And we started our mountain bike seasons up there. Loved it. Uh, little apprehensive when a new disc golf course came in and kind of cut through some of the trails that we are currently using, but the experience has been overwhelmingly positive. Every time we've been out there practicing and we've, you know, had some kids riding through an area of the disc golf course. All the players have been more than willing to step back to wait, take a break while we get all our riders through. And oftentimes, it, you know, the exchange when we're done is. That's really great what you're doing with those kids. I wish they had that when we were, you know, their age, sort of thing. So it's been overwhelmingly positive and we would anticipate that. And we would. Try to promote that sense of, uh, community and coexistence in the park as well.
I, I also just, I want to say to the entire council, it's, it's been absolutely incredible. To see the collaboration between all of these groups and the organizations. When I was up there for Arbor Day. Our Tree Commission had actually been collaborating with the disc golf course so that they could pick out the correct and appropriate trees. That would cause the most exciting, um, you know, elements to the course. And so it's exciting to see not only the collaboration between. Uh, the borough and organizations, but also organizations within themselves. And I think this really opens up kind of the north side for these incredible recreation opportunities. So. It's exciting to see that traffic in Reservoir Park and to see people really enjoying the beautiful outdoors that we have, that space.
One other item that I will add about the location of the park in, in its proximity to the S R T. Is there's ample parking down at the Crombie Trailhead and as well as the trailhead down by Veterans Park. And we as cyclists, we don't mind parking and riding to get where we need to go. And so if anything, I think that would be a benefit, um, that the trails are accessible to the park itself. I think that further enhances the location.
It's council's pleasure for this newly added agenda item. Mr. Kirchner.
Mr. President, with, with that, I'll take a stab at this. I, I move that council approve. The revised, uh, Phoenixville M T B plan as presented this evening. And authorize, um, borough staff. To execute a memorandum of understanding with borough staff and appropriate consultants reviewing and approving the plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley. Uh, a well-stated motion. I believe that covered all the, uh. All the things that, that we would want to cover. So I appreciate that. Uh, questions on the motion as presented? I would just like to add one, one item, uh, just one, one point of, uh, clarification here between this proposal. Uh, and the two items that were in our consent agenda. Uh, this brings a, a community fundraised, uh, parks improvement of, of just about a quarter million dollars in tonight's. Agenda in terms of park improvement. So. I think it's great that our community has been stepping up and making so many, uh, contributions to our park system. It is quite impressive. So. Any other questions on this motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
With that, we'll move on to, uh, item ten of tonight's agenda, uh, ordinances and resolutions. We have a motion to adopt, uh, uh, motor, motor vehicles update. Chapter fifteen, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amendment to chapter fifteen, Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. On this item, we have, uh, this is a mostly a housekeeping item on our E V ordinance. Cleaning up some language and amending it. Are there any questions from council on this ordinance adoption? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And with that, we'll need a motion to close the, uh, public meeting and open a public hearing. So move.
Second.
Perfect. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Uh, so. We have, uh, opened this public hearing for the consideration of the Borough Comprehensive Plan Update. As contemplated by Article Three of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. As required by the M P C. The draft comprehensive plan was shared with the Borough Planning Commission, Chester County Planning Commission, Phoenixville. Area School District, Skookel Township, East Pikeland Township, and Upper Providence Township, Montgomery County. In addition, the comprehensive plan update was an agenda item at last month's Public Borough Council Meeting held on April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The purpose of this hearing is the formal consideration of the comprehensive plan update, including our public participation. I would add that a public comment period was advertised and held until the end of March, twenty twenty-two. However, before I get started, uh, it was identified that although, uh, the. We have evidence that the comprehensive plan update was shared with all of those entities that I listed. We were unable in our records to find, uh. Evidence that we shared the comprehensive plan update with the Regional Planning Committee. Um, and, and for that purpose, I would recommend, uh, that Borough Council continue this hearing. Until the June fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two Borough Council Meeting held at seven P M. In order to allow us to ensure that we have shared, uh, the comprehensive plan update with the Regional Planning Committee. Uh, in advance of this hearing.
We would still take public comment tonight, though, as needed.
We, we certainly can. Yes. So. If there are. No questions, uh, I, I would entertain the motion first and then we can take public comment. So I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing on the comprehensive plan update to the June fourteenth. Twenty twenty-two Borough Council Meeting at seven P M.
So moved.
Second.
Um, so I have a motion and a second, all the, any, excuse me, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Oh, excuse me, uh, seven to zero. And with that, those persons, uh, here in person, uh, expecting to be able to make comment. On the comprehensive plan, uh, we would now entertain your public comment. And then we will take public comment from anyone here on the Zoom platform thereafter.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name's Dana Waldman. I'm on Hall Street. So, uh, on behalf of Friends of Phoenixville Area Open Space, which you, which is the initiative, you've, um, heard David mention, um, via Zoom. Um, I wanted to show support for the call for more trails, um, and open space that you have listed in your comp plan. Um, we've seen overwhelming community support for the preservation of open space. And, uh. We are hoping you have taken into consideration the wishes of the community to include the southern extension of the trail. Which is included in the. P R P C, Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan in twenty twenty-one, but was omitted in this comp plan. So, um, including. This southern, um, extension of the trail would make Phoenixville, um. Walkable and accessible, um, not just for some of Phoenixville, but really including, um. A lot more of Phoenixville. Um, and we also hope you've considered the addition of the, of the kindergarten center as a future, um, location for a park. Um, in addition to the southern trail entrance. It really is the perfect location to supplement parks closer to town center, which is something that you mentioned in the comp plan. Which we are fully in support of and love. Um, the south side of Phoenixville is, is missing, um, a park. So it kind of checks all the boxes. And, yeah, we just, we'd really like to see this space stay in, in Phoenixville's hands. Um, you can't create new open space. We can only preserve what we already have. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave Meadows, six fifteen Maine. And, uh, I addressed the Planning Commission in their March meeting. I had three comments on the comprehensive plan and I wanted to reiterate one tonight. Uh, one, I mean, I'm a, as a civil engineer for forty-five years, the comprehensive plan is a very important document. It, uh, it sets the stage for planning, uh, zoning for the next ten years. So I, I take. What is laid out seriously. But the one item I wanted to bring up. Under, uh, Transportation Section of the Plan is that we would dust off an old, uh, bypass route for Bridge Street. Uh, at one point, there was a, a, uh, Parkway called the French Creek Parkway. Which was due to take off at the northern intersection of Bridge and Star. And then run through the old steel mill and either, I think back in the day, it was maybe going to come out somewhere near the new Giant Mall is or somewhere like that. Which is no longer feasible, but parts of it are available. If, uh, in, with Riverworks and the new, uh, construction going on in the Steel Plan, maybe out from Paradise Street. So I would just suggest. That something be added in there that we would be looking for, uh, to establish a bypass for Bridge Street. Uh, Pl- Planning Commission, D V R P C Planning Commission documents show there's an average. Annual traffic load of ten to twelve thousand vehicles a day. And I think that's seven-year-old data. Peak demand could be fifteen thousand vehicles a day on a Friday or a Saturday. So. Given the, you know, the, uh, desire to close Bridge Street, uh, for special events, I think it would certainly. Bode well for town if we did have a way, a convenient bypass rather than let it trickle through all the residential neighborhoods. So I think, uh, that's my input and I'd like to see that added. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in person that would like to comment on the comprehensive plan? Uh, seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom?
Go ahead, Mark. I've turned on your microphone.
Good evening. Mark Connolly, Phoenixville, uh, Green Team. Um, one item on, uh, the process and two items on the content. The motion that was just voted, uh, maybe a little bit aggressive. I'm not sure what's involved with all of the. Notifications and what have you, but the last Wednesday of the month is when the P R P C meets. And I'm not sure what kind of modifications would come out. So I'm not sure. And I'm not sure what kind of modifications would come out, so I'm not sure that it's fair to press the contractor to make the changes unless they're all just put in as contingent approval items. So and I think this is just symptomatic of COVID, so I, I think a little bit more patience on this vote is in order. And I was hoping that one of the council would make that motion to make date contingent on the PRPC approval and some of the things that Dave just mentioned. On the content, Green Team has been at it since nineteen eighty-nine. The Phoenixville Greenway was conceived in nineteen eighty-six and approved by the borough. I'm not sure that we've taken full opportunity of the conceptualization and the completion of the Phoenixville Greenway. I think in particular, the map we are connected. I don't think that it's sufficiently visionary or complete with regards to what is almost totally around the river and the French Creek. So I, I really think that we can do better in that as well as the final item, which I'll mention, which is the Trail Connection South. We don't have a name for it except for what's in the PRPC, which is the Schuylkill Freedom Trail. It was part of the nineteen eighty-six development plan to have a trail there. So I'm hoping that we can take our time, do a good job, be a little bit more visionary in how we talk about the trails all the way around the river and move forward with all the great initiatives that everyone's been working to put into the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jane.
Hi, I'm Jane Dougdale, resident of Borough. The minutes of the last Borough Council meeting show that I, I spoke. I also sent a letter with those comments. They don't show that I requested the proposed Trails Map should show an extension of the trail south of Bridge Street on the south side of Schuylkill River, which a couple of other people have mentioned here. It was, this extension was part of the original Greenway Plan that Mark just mentioned. I would urge council to add this to the proposed Trails Map and because it will help connect this part of town to the rest of the trail system. I'd also like to urge council to highlight the need for an additional park in this same area south of Bridgen along the south side of the Schuylkill River. As Dana mentioned. And as you may know, there is an effort to reverse the vote of the school board to sell the kindergarten center here in this area for high-density housing. We support the Borough Council's effort to keep this land in public hands. Our effort is called SOS, Save Open Space. And I want you to please watch for our float in the Dogwood Parade on Saturday, May twenty-first. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, David. I'm sorry. Go ahead. If you're speaking, David, we can't hear you.
Let's try that. Now, do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry. So David Lasko here, Morgan Street, and although I'm with the Green Team, I'll speak in this hearing as a resident and occasional biker. Just to I don't want my expression of disappointment to overshadow my praise for all the wonderful things that the comprehensive plan does and what the council has done with the rec center and the reservoir park. It's all fantastic. The reason why I'm disappointed about the, the Freedom Trail not being on the, the trail map is because I really, I guess I don't understand why it's not. The Freedom Trail is mentioned in the comprehensive plan as part of the input. And it was on the prior comprehensive plan. And it, it was listed as proposed at that time. I don't remember if it was two thousand and ten or twenty thirteen, but the last plan had it with the dotted line. It's a proposed trail. The borough didn't have any site control. It doesn't stop you from, from putting it in as a, a vision for the future, a possibility. So I really don't understand why it's been removed and, and that's why I'm disappointed. But again, I, I want to, don't want that to overshadow the, my, my praise for all the great work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hilly, I've turned on your microphone.
Okay. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I read over the comprehensive plan and I was looking at the mixed-use growth and I, I don't see anything listed as to the uses either by right or condition. I want to know if everything that is in the borough is still going to stay or are there significant changes? That's my concern. Would you be able to answer that?
Sure, Ms. Hilly. The comprehensive plan provides a overarching view, a background. The specific uses that you are referring to is the next step, which is the zoning ordinance. So you're not going to see specific permitted uses by right or special exception or conditional use or that type of thing in a comprehensive plan.
Oh. Okay, I'll be looking then. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to recess the hearing until the June fourteenth meeting, as previously confirmed and resume the public Borough Council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Section twelve of tonight's agenda. First up tonight is our planning commission, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing, no action to report, no project reported out of the last planning commission. Our next meeting is at six PM this coming Thursday, the twelfth, no, the eleventh, I beg your pardon. Nope, the twelfth, at six PM and that's all for now.
Thank you. Ms. Dugan with HARB.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for renovations and repairs for one seventy-eight, one eighty Bridge Street.
Second. So a motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirchner. This is an item that I wanted to make sure that had some time for discussion since it did not leave HARB unanimously. I, I was looking through this one, so I'll just kick off the discussion on it. I think what actually bothered me.
Introduce it.
Oh. If you'd like to introduce it, please, please do so.
Well, I was just going to say that the reason that this had a, it didn't go through unanimously is because they're changing the entryway. And, you know, a couple of people on HARB didn't think it was appropriate to change that. The thing is, the last time it was updated was actually all the way in the eighties, so it's not like it was historic at that point in time. And the difference that they changed is just the entrance way right now is like a trapezoid if you're looking at it and there's what I was explained to is it's like a pinch point where the two places enter and exit and some places with dogs and some places with kids and even handicapped people. And they're having a hard time with it, so they made it from a trapezoid into a rectangle. That's really the only difference.
My main point of contention was that they've already started construction prior to, yeah, so, so that's why I actually had it rearranged, because when I saw them putting in new windows, which were in the proposal and they look nice, however, they're not approved, you know, we have not voted on this, so I did want to make sure that this was brought up to, to council and discussed as thoroughly as it needs to be. So I don't know if anybody else takes umbrage to that, but I wanted to open it up to council. It is a dramatic, you know, it is a somewhat dramatic change. Understand that the facade is not entirely historic. They are leaving some of the things, but they are removing quite a number of the corbels and other items that you know, seem to have some character that, that seemed to be going away, so.
Do we know is the current design, well, I guess not current if they started, but the current design ADA accessible and is this an improvement that would make them ADA accessible? Because I think that, again, I understand your point, but I, I think that is the case. I would love to see more businesses investing in that accessibility. So, you know.
They didn't go to make anything ADA accessible like that. This was just more with having like the two businesses or for their dogs if there's more than one person, some people bringing children in, they're just having a hard time getting, like, the traffic in there is just making it difficult. So it's really not that big of a change, so. And they're not changing the step or anything.
And they're also changing the entryway of the restaurant next to our burrito, correct?
Yeah, they're two connected.
They're both really tight. I've been in both.
Yeah, they're both, they're connected, those two doors. That's why they're expanding the doorway.
Oh, what would trigger them to need to actually put in access? So that there is not a step? At what point does the modifications indicate that they need to to make that a ramp? Because it's not much of a step, so.
It's based on, the, the modifications are based on square footage of area, so as long as they stay within a lesser change to the overall square footage of the building, it usually doesn't invoke that.
Any other questions? Or, I mean, I might be the only one that had concerns. I'll leave it at that, but any other questions or comments from, from council?
Well, I guess to your point, how do we address that concern?
It, it's difficult, to be honest, because the certificate of appropriateness and the historical review is kind of a limited review. So certainly we do not encourage anyone to start installing things prior to getting approval. And if it's council's pleasure to deny it on that basis, I think we can. But, but then the the question would be i- if a window is installed, what would satisfy Borough Council? Would we then want them to take out the window, come back in for another certificate of appropriateness and then put the window back in? So while, while I think we have the ability to deny it on that basis, but I, I think we need to weigh what kind of repercussions we'd be looking for and what's realistic in this standpoint or in this instance, excuse me.
I was just going to continue that I think that, and I've always thought this, a lot of times the HARB pick places start a little bit early and they absolutely shouldn't, but a lot of times they do. Maybe we should look into putting in a fine if you started early or something like that. You know, I wouldn't, to deny it for something that we weren't going to deny just because they started early. It, but it's not a good precedent instead to let people start things before it's approved. So I think really we should have a fine for it, but yeah, that's about as far as I'd go.
Did they have a permit? I mean, don't they, don't you have to have a?
For window replacement, you don't typically need permits.
Okay. So they have.
Having recently done windows.
That would require them to have a permit from us at this point.
All right, to Dana's point, I, and this is something I've talked about with Gene, I would like to see our HARB have more have more teeth in the ordinance. So I, I would like, I don't know if that would start in HARB or start in policy or, or go tandem through both, but I think it would be a, a good time in the next couple of months to, to start reviewing and revising our, our HARB ordinance to, to see if there are sections that that we can make a little bit more bolstered to, to really try to maintain the downtown feel because they, they're, they're there are now possibly more buildings that are new than there are old and there's a risk of losing some of the, the look and then just ending up looking like a, a modern strip mall town center development that, that I think is what we're trying to avoid.
So what we'll do is we'll, we'll take the, the current ordinance, do a cursory discussion with HARB at their meeting, let them take a look at some things, bring the topic up, take that information back, revise the ordinance as necessary, send it over to policy and then bring it to here.
I, I think that would be useful at this point.
And I would add there, there is a violations and penalties section currently in chapter twelve of the Borough ordinances. I think it should be probably clarified for early installation as opposed to just completely not applying for a permit whatsoever. And I, I think if we are interested in, you know, imposing fines as a part of any approval for early installation, we're also going to have to get the code department involved to make sure we have documentation of that violation. Because, because our, our discussions here, we, we need a little bit more evidence of that in order to impose those.
I think that's, yeah, I, I'd like to see, you know, some, I, I know neighboring municipalities or at least ones within, within a range are you do have somewhat more strict HARB ordinances and I just don't want to end up in a spot where everything looks like a, a college real town center development, so. With that, any other questions or comments on this motion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries eight zero. Ms., Ms. Dugan, anything else from HARB?
No, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Kirchner with Regional Planning Committee.
Not, not much to report out. We did have a presentation from Chester County Planning Commission. One thing I found interesting in it was that by twenty fifty, Chester County is going to need fifty-six thousand more new housing units to accommodate growing population. So just put your head around that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rec Board, Ms. Dugan.
Sorry, there's a lot here. All right, well, it is that time of year, it's spring, summer area where there's a lot of programs going on, so I won't go through all the details on everything, but I will update you on what you could find obviously on the Borough website. And sometimes the locations are Reeves Park or Patton-Adel Field or there's a call different place, so just follow along with that. And sometimes there's a cost involved, but it's not prohibitive. There's the Family Phys Ed that that's been going on for a while. It's on, at Friendship Field on Sundays, May eighth, twenty-second, June fifth, nineteen, you got the picture. We've got a Shiny Nights Chess Club on Wednesday, starting May eighteenth to June twenty-second for six to thirteen-year-olds. The Disc Golf Clinic is new. Kids and adults can learn the basics of disc golf in a two-session clinic and no equipment required. There's two different ones for five to ten-year-olds and then there's one for eleven and up, adults included. There's the Barnstone Art for Kids, which is a nonprofit serving children facing adversity to recognize the power of art, connectivity, creativity for children and caregivers. Young Rembrandts is for ages five to twelve. It's another arts class vaguely similar. That's at the Phoenixville Rec Center. Yeah, I think I'm missing something. Youth Yoga is the, is a six-week session that started April twentieth, goes to May twenty-eighth. And then there's the summer registration for the camps that are coming this summer. There's the twenty twenty-two Summer Tennis Camp Orange Crush Tournament. The camp is July eleventh to the twenty-ninth with the tournament on the twenty-ninth. There's the Papa Summer Basketball League for twenty twenty-two, and that's for everyone. for twenty-twenty-two, and that's for everyone seven to seventeen, with a game played on Father's Day, June nineteenth. A lot of these are, oh, and also they are looking for basketball coaches. Then there's the Snapology Programs. There's several of them, Junior Engineers, the Combat Robots, the Pokimania, and then there's Science Explorers, where they have Rockin' Concoctions, which is the explorer chemistry, and then there's the Take a Dive one, which is marine biology. The Jump Start Sports Program is, okay, this is the camp, there's two different sessions. Week one is August first to the fifth, and that's the Ultimate Warrior one. And then there's the College Days, that's August eighth to the twelfth. There's yoga, and that's at the New Recreation Center, and that's going to be for meditation and restorative things on Monday. On Tuesdays is from nine-thirty to ten-thirty in the morning. Find your vibes strong and stable, all levels. And Wednesdays, find your tribe, another all levels, and that's from six to seven at night. We have table tennis now, and that just started at the New Rec Center, so I have not even tried that or looked at that. Then there's another one that is core strength and flexibility. This is another yoga-type program, and you need to bring a mat and water, they say, and that's when the spring session starts, has started, April twenty-second to May thirty-first, and that's Tuesdays from six-thirty to seven-fifteen. And then there's a special workshop, yoga workshop, on Thursday, May twenty-sixth, from six to seven-thirty. And that's just a therapeutic experience, and a lot of these are at the New Rec Center, so I hope everybody gets to try out what our new center is like by being part of a program over there. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Next up, we have Beautification Advisory Commission with Ms. Webb.
Two things. One, the Balder Park Adopt a Park dedication is on June third at six PM, and there is a goal to have all Schuylkill River Trail kiosk signage updated by Memorial Day.
Thank you. And Tree Advisory Commission with Ms. Berkeley.
Tree Advisory Commission has been pretty busy. They did really work with staff to update the tree ordinance, so they have given their input, so has our arborist, and that will be going to Policy Committee in the next coming meetings for review, so they did get their input and feedback heard, and edits have been made based on that. The arborist did provide update and review of twelve trees that were presented for removal or pruning, and he was able to speak to that, so it's awesome. We have, you know, that system up and running with having Tac give input on it, but have our expert really be the one reviewing, which is awesome. We had a wonderful Arbor Day planning. I was able to be at Reservoir Park. I know Mr. Carmonito was able to go out and about and be at Reservoir Park and then planting within other areas of the Borough, which is awesome. Lots of great collaboration, too, as the mayor mentioned. The disc golf course folks were actually able to consult with the Tree Advisory Commission and put the appropriate trees along the course, so we're all kind of working in harmony together, and we're not damaging trees. And then there will be spring planting that is, you know, Borough-sponsored, so the trees that we plant coming up, as well as there's been some collaboration with the developer that is dedicating some trees to us, and Tac was able to weigh in on the varietals that we'd be requesting.
Great, thank you. And now Police Personnel, Public Safety Committee?
I think we took care of that very well in the beginning of our meeting. So thank you to council for being forward-thinking on that, and we congratulate our two new lieutenants.
Thank you. Mr. Moore with Parks and Rec.
We pretty much took care of everything with the consent agenda. My personal thanks for approving the lighting plan for Veterans Park. That's going to really help that facility, and again, that was, as you pointed out earlier, that's being completely funded by the rugby and cricket, cricket teams. The only other, we had some discussion about Mr. Kirkner's invitation with some neighbors of the, of the Reservoir Park, and we're going to continue those discussions about how to help the interaction between the disc golf people and the neighbors on South Street there.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Kirchner with Policy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would make a motion that council schedule and advertise a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amendment, amendment to Chapter twenty-two subdivision and land development, Part Four, Design Standards, Section twenty-two dash four-seventeen dot seven, electric vehicle parking.
Second?
The motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? One comment I will make, working in this field and looking around for other examples of an ordinance like this, there aren't any. So I do commend staff and Policy Committee and council for moving forward on this ordinance, as this is literally something that we are the leading edge on again, so that's my only comment on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Kirchner?
Nothing else for me.
Thank you.
President.
And Mr. Weiss with ITT.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. No action to report at this time. Our next meeting is one week from today on this, May seventeenth at seven PM.
Thank you, and I I believe next month we will be renaming the Committee to Infrastructure Technology, Transportation, and Sustainability. So it will now be ITTS. So we will be bundling all our activity into that committee, whether you ask for it or not. With that, Ms. Dugan in Finance.
We covered everything on the, in the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. With that, that opens up our second and final round of public participation. Any members of the public who are joining us here in person are welcome to step up to the podium and provide your name and address. We do ask you to limit comment to three minutes or less. We also will have, after any members of the public that are here with us tonight, make their comment. We will open up to members on Zoom. With that, any members of the public tonight in the room? Seeing no stampede to the podium, we will open it up to our Zoom guests. Do we have any members raising their hands, Ms. Logan? With that, we will close the second and final round of public participation. In our packets tonight, we had staff reports from manager, police, fire, planning, public works, finance, and human resources. If there's any questions or comments on that, seeing none, I do believe we have a need for executive session to discuss litigation. Scott, help me out here. I'm not exactly sure.
Involving a potential condemnation, or a condemnation.
Very good. Will, is there any anticipation of voting on that item tonight?
No, I believe we can adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Motion adjourned to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. We are adjourning the public portion of this meeting at eight forty PM. Thank you very much to everybody who joined us via Zoom. We look forward to seeing you next month. Have a great night.